Let's get it going. Okay, here we are, November seventeenth, planning board meeting. Um, let's get started with a roll call. Stacy.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Tori.
Here.
Taya.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
And then Jesse is here. Melissa can join after six, so if we're still here, hopefully she will join us then. And then we'll just kind of wait on Shannon, who isn't here yet, but hopefully will join us soon. And Matthew Menard, deputy city planner. Awesome. Thank you. Let's go ahead and approve our minutes from the last meeting. Would anyone like to approve the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October. Would anyone like to second?
One second.
Thanks, Taya. Any discussion about the minutes? Okay, let's vote. Stacy?
Four.
Mike?
Four.
Tori? Taya?
Four.
Jim?
Four.
And I'm also four. Okay, minutes passed. There's nobody from the public on, right, Matthew? I don't see anybody. Okay, no public comment. We'll skip Public Works update and go to the planning or planning update. Matthew, do you have anything for us?
Sure. As a few of you know, or all of you should know, because I emailed you, but I saw you at the meeting today. The first sort of input meeting for the Housing Action Plan was today that was hosted by PCEC and led by HRDC, who's leading that process. Basically, they're looking for inputs at this point on the plan. I sent you all a link to that draft and also to their input form, so it'd be great if you could give input. I will reach out to Lila, who is basically writing the plan, and see what their process is and what she's thinking for public input, but I would love to have them presented to you all. Certainly, it will be presented to you all in some form if it's going to go to City Commission for adoption. Obviously, you'll make a recommendation on that, but I would like to see if they're willing to have it presented to you in draft form, so we can get your input as well. Other things that are going on in the planning world, Trails and Active Transportation Plan, the consultant's writing the draft. I'm hoping to have that soon. Once that draft is released to the public, we will send it all to you. That will definitely go through both you all and Parks and Trails for public input in public meetings and for recommendation again to the City Commission for adoption. We are hoping to have a kickoff for the downtown plan, for the actual plan part of the plan. MSU Design Center students have been working on sort of the design interventions for specific locations around downtown that they're calling opportunity sites. I am meeting with them on Friday for basically a 90% completion review. Hopefully, that will happen in December. It's chained to their, it's an architecture studio class, so it's chained to their semester. So we may, I may ask you all to hold the December meeting at a different time, in a different location, to do sort of a presentation where they may have boards and hopefully a larger space and get at least a store preservation in on that meeting as well and have that as a public meeting, so the public can comment. And look at and discuss with the students what they were thinking for specific spaces around downtown. And then after that, there'll be a downtown planning process, which will have a significant amount of public input. That's being led by PCEC. Jennifer Magic is the consultant on that. So we will see that for at least the next six months or so. We had a meeting with a developer. You may see a subdivision application sometime in the next three to six months. So just a heads up on that. It's out of Discovery Vista, so hopefully nothing too complicated, but I just want you to be aware of that. But we don't have a formal application yet, so nothing solid quite yet. We talked about some zoning updates last time. The R3 mixed-use density setbacks uses update was recommended for approval by the zoning commission at their last meeting. So expect that to go to City Commission for the first meeting in December. That's a pretty large update to basically make the zoning more consistent with the growth policy and allow us to place mixed-use zones where the future land use map suggested. The next zoning commission meeting, we're scheduled to discuss locations for R3 and mixed-use and a designer view overlay to be consistent with the future land use map. I'm not sure we'll do everything that suggests in the future land use map, as it is a 20-year plan, but it's something that the zoning commission will be discussing probably in person in December with some maps. So if you want to attend that, that's open to the public. That happens on the second Tuesday of every month, so that will be December 14. And that should be a little bit more fun. It should be some maps and maybe a little bit more charrette of style of a meeting. So if you're interested in that, check that out. If you're interested in the upzoning, check out the City Commission meeting. Otherwise, I think that's probably about it. Nope, there's one more thing. Two more things, really. The City Commission, so we brought the future of the planning board issue back to the City Commission for decision. They basically said that they wanted to wait until the strategic planning process was done to make that decision. So don't expect that decision anytime soon. We're probably three months out, or if not more, from that being completed. They did hold their first meeting on updated strategic plan on Monday and basically talked about the mission value statement and strategic plan, but didn't make any decisions. The next meeting for that is on the 30th. I will be on vacation, so I probably won't be there. We are coming to the end of the year here, so there are a couple of administrative planning board things that I should bring up. Both Jesse and Jim's terms are up. Jim, I know you just got appointed, but you took over for someone else, so your term is up. We have also opened those positions to the public, as is required. I believe that closes on either December 10th or December 13th. Jesse, I know we have an application from you. Jim, if you do want to reapply, please do resubmit your materials as soon as possible. And if any of you know anyone that would like to be on the planning board, who is, they will have to be a preholder for these positions. Please do let me know, or don't let me know. Tell them to apply, basically, and they can send that to me or to fit. And the other thing that I was reminded of today on an administrative side is yearly, we do have planning board sort of summary about what you've worked on this year. Obviously, it's been a huge year for the planning board. So that may be something to discuss at the next meeting. Generally, the chair would write a sort of short-ish summary on what has happened this year, and the planning board would approve that to be sent to the City Commission. And it's basically so the City Commission knows what all the boards are doing. And I think that is all I have for you all. I'm happy to answer any questions about anything.
I have one.
Reach out to Shannon.
Go ahead, Stacy. Shannon, too.
Going to get six texts at once. So I was wondering, I think I noticed in the paper that there were five zoning positions open. Is that, how did that happen so that there were so many at one time?
So in a very strange, I'll say quirk of the fact that a lot of the boards and commissions wrote a lot of their own bylaws. The way that the zoning commission's bylaws are written, it states that their, their terms run simultaneous to the chair of the City Commission. So technically, all five zoning commission members should be reappointed every single year, because the chair is redecided every single year. I'm not sure that was the intent of that bylaw. In this case, it doesn't matter, because our current chair did not run for reelection, so there will have to be a new chair. So basically, all of their terms expired at the same time. Most boards, that is not the way we do, so it's a bit of a weird one.
So it's not like, so I'm assuming that the majority of them are planning on continuing. It's not like a mass exodus of everybody. A full turnover.
I don't, we didn't have a bunch of resignations, and we didn't kick a bunch of people off the board. We didn't kick anyone off the board. And we didn't have anyone resign. I don't know if they're going to reapply or not. I have one application right now of those five, so. Hopefully, we will get a full board, because the zoning commission is also busy. It's also something that we should bring up here, is that you all at the next meeting do need to make a recommendation on applicants for the two vacant seats to the City Commission at the December meeting. It's going to be a little bit trickier if we hold it as a presentation by the architecture students, but we will figure it out. We may have to have an additional very short meeting to do that.
You mean for the planning board vacancies? Okay.
And so far, we only have one application for that, which is you, Jesse.
Right. Okay. Do we have to do, do we, so after the two vacant seats are filled, do we choose officers again in January?
Yep, so we'll need to choose a chair and a secretary and a vice chair in January. It's, I'm also not quite sure what the commission is going to do now that we have two commissioners on the planning board. So that'll be another thing that we will sort out in January.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Matthew on his update?
So, so that brings the question, then, is it, is it possible to have two commissioners on the planning board, or?
Yep.
Or is it automatically that when you run for a different, for an office, you're not just automatically kicked off? You know, how does that work?
State law allows us to have more than one. We'll see what the commission wants to do with the fact that we now have two. One is appointed by the commission as specifically as the commissioner, without being matured here at square. So we could remain as is. That's certainly something the commission would choose to do.
Anything else, Stacy?
Nope, that's all.
Anybody else? I just have one quickie. We, Matthew, will you remind me exactly what the downtown business plan is actually going to give us?
So it's not a business plan, it's just a downtown plan in general. I'm hoping it gives us some recommendations on how to encourage business downtown, how to make downtown more walkable, maybe some urban design recommendations, some downtown improvement recommendations, but I'm not quite sure yet, because I'm not leading that plan and the actual planning process hasn't really started. It was basically funded by the Montana Main Street Program, which is a state grant program to ensure vital or revitalizing. So I don't think our downtown particularly needs to be quote-unquote revitalized. It's pretty vital at this point, so I think it'll just be some recommendations. I don't know if you've seen that, there's a 2002 downtown plan, which is almost all urban design. I would expect it to be an update and expansion of that, basically.
Okay. Does it take like inventory of all the like second-story spaces and things like that? For, I know that that was brought up a while ago for housing, or, you know, there's a lot of, you know, usable space or potentially usable space above a lot of those businesses downtown, but there would need to be some like significant infrastructure, like elevators and things like that. Will it address that kind of thing, or was that in the housing plan? I haven't looked at the whole thing yet.
So there was, I saw a draft of the inventory. It's not just second stories, it's all stories. The draft I saw was great, but I haven't seen a final product yet. We were supposed to have that a long time ago, so it's something I'll talk, ask them about on Friday. As soon as I get that and it's public, I'll send that to you as well. Basically, it was laying out all the uses of all the floors of all the buildings downtown, and it also showed parking areas. I don't know if the plan is going to address things like the challenges of turning second stories to residential from offices or retrofitting historic buildings to have residential units, and I'm not quite sure if it's going to go that far at this point. It's probably something that will come up during the beginning of public input processes, so definitely stay involved in that. And if there's anything you're interested in, once we start that process, probably reach out to Jennifer Magic or give them your comments.
Okay, cool.
Is the, is the plan covering the Livingston Business District, or are they just focusing on Main Street and South Second Street between Park and Clark?
I'm not quite sure what the boundaries are going to be. I think it's a little bit broader than that, but it's mostly going to focus on the commercial portion of downtown, which is relatively narrow. You start losing commercial basically once you go beyond Third and be on the other side and then past Clark. So my guess is it'll be sort of those bounds, but it may be extending a little bit further than that.
Matthew, is there funding for some of the implementation, or was it just funding for the planning and inventory?
Just for the plan. So the grant was for the plan, basically to hire a consultant, which is Jennifer Magic. And that was a partnership, that grant was a partnership between the city and the city. There is, that funding is much broader, but we can't reapply for funding until we've used the existing funding that we've gotten. So potentially, there's funding available in future rounds of the grant for implementation, but we have to do the planning and spend the money we have before we get another grant to do the same thing.
So it's going to be, so I just was seeing where there's an overlap between kind of like potential future housing and the downtown plan, this plan, potentially?
I don't think there'll be any overlap. The housing plan is simply a, basically a tools. And it's an action plan, so it's got a list of tools, housing tools that could be implemented by the city. I don't think the downtown plan will address that. They're not going to have affordable housing tools in there. It'll be more specific and more, I think, like a traditional plan and more design and improvement heavy. I won't, it won't address the housing issue that was covered in the Housing Action Plan. It may have some goals about needs for housing and things like that, but I don't think it'll go too specific on, you know, specific actions to take, but at this point, I don't know. But I wouldn't expect them to overlap particularly. The Housing Action Plan is pretty broad in what is in there. It's basically just a list of tools and how to implement them. And I would encourage you all to read that Housing Action Plan. It's for both Park County and the city, so the city portion is a bit shorter and sort of intermixed, but it's not particularly long. And it's an interesting, it's an interesting read to see what, at least what other places have done and what some of the tools are out there for encouraging more housing and more housing that's affordable or attainable to locals and to the locals.
It was interesting what a hot topic, there was a lunch and learn today that PCEC put on about the Housing Action Plan, and I had to hop off halfway through it, but the hottest topic seemed to be short-term rentals. Hot, hot topic today for 30 minutes, anyway.
It is a hot topic. I should also note that PCEC is doing at least some deeper dives on specific tools, and I don't know how many they're going to do, but the next two are community land trusts, which we have one of those in Livingston, which is what we call the Livingston cabins up on top of the hill. And so there are a bunch more details about that. And then that's on December 1st. And the December 8th PCEC meeting is about short-term rentals. So if you want to learn more about some of the tools, that's a good way to do it. Short-term rentals were definitely the hot topic today, and I expect them to remain a hot topic throughout the process.
Has both been regulated, those? Yeah.
Yes, somewhat. I know they have permitting, and I think they have a limit on a number of short-term rentals in specific districts or zones, but I'm not quite sure. But they definitely have a permitting system and some sort of regulations around them.
Okay. When you say permitting, are they, are individuals that own short-term rentals taxed? Or is it just a permit to have them, a payment?
They can't tax them specifically, but they have to get a permit, so there'll be a fee attached to the permit, so that's a tax. But you, we, I don't think under state law, we can tax, cities can tax them specifically. The state does take lodging tax from them, some of which comes back to the community. It's not a high percent, but they do pay a tax. That's a different registration process. You have to register with the state. And usually, if you're on one of the major websites, they'll just do it for you. But there was an article in the news a couple days ago, Whitefish increased the permit fee to something like $400 a year, and they're just running it as a business license, essentially.
Okay, so it's a one-time permitting fee or annual permitting fee to own a short-term rental? Because of all the hubbub I heard after the meeting, and I was like, I didn't hear the whole thing, but it was, they're going to tax the heck out of us, and I was like, I don't, I don't know.
And now we probably can't do that unless we got very creative with mail levies, would be my guess. And I'm not sure we could even do that.
Okay.
So will you continue to send us the links to those workshops, those lunch ones, even though I read it wrong? And I showed up an hour late.
Yeah, just remind me. I probably won't be able to do the next one. I'm going on vacation the 24th, and I'm flying home on the 1st. But remind me, and I'll try to get the ones I can. I can definitely do the one after on the 8th. And if you remind me the 22nd, you may have a link for the one on the 1st. I'm not sure.
Stacy, you can join the PCEC newsletter. I think that's what it is, or get on their listserv. They're the ones who are primarily hosting these lunch and learns. So you'll get an email with a registration link hovering in your calendar.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Matthew?
Yeah, I've got one. So the short-term rentals, do we have an idea roughly how many we have in the city limits?
I, so according to Air DNA, which is sort of a data collection site, in the zip code, we have about 330, if my memory serves. Zip code runs all the way down to Immigrant, so that number is a little bit deceiving. I would guess in the city limits itself, we're probably looking at about 250 or so, maybe a little bit less. What's interesting about the data, and you can look, a lot of the data is free, some of it's paywalls. We have not paid for it, so I haven't done a deep dive. A lot of the paywall stuff is people basically who own Airbnbs can make more money, because it gives you economic data. But basically, most of the Airbnbs in town are whole houses and full properties, which is sort of an interesting quirk of Livingston. It's not that common, and something like 80% of them. So it's potentially 200 or so houses that are being used as Airbnbs instead of owned locally or being rented out as full houses.
And ultimately, ADUs fall under the purview of the City Commission? Is that correct?
So ADUs and short-term rentals are two very different things.
Okay, all right, short-term rentals. Let's just keep it to short-term rentals.
So yes, because basically, if we were going to regulate them in any way, we'd have to do a city ordinance to do so. So the City Commission would have to approve an ordinance change. I think they would have to approve either a resolution or an ordinance change to even do a permitting system for them, like require a business license would probably be some sort of City Commission decision as well. So it will likely all go through the City Commission. I don't have any idea if we're going to move to regulate them or permit them or not. It'll be a City Commission directive to us probably as well. That will probably come out of the planning process.
Anybody find Shannon?
No. Um. Anybody else have any questions for Matt before we move on to board comments, final board comments? Unless you have any Public Works knowledge, Matthew, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I can cover, I guess, the big Public Works thing, and it affects planning as well. As you all probably know, the bond issuance on the ballot for an over/under pass on the North Side failed pretty roundly. So that does affect how things are planned out on that side of town. Otherwise, City Commission approved a new building for the Public Works area. They're building out there for cold storage for vehicles and things like that. We're still working on a potential improvement district for Green Acres and getting sewer out to them. Expect that to happen sometime soon-ish, hopefully, so we can bring all of them onto sewer walls when their septic systems start failing. And it's something we'll have to address with the new maniacs areas as well. Otherwise.
Did you, did you say Green Acres? What was the timeline on that for getting Green Acres up?
Honestly, I'm not sure. They're still holding community meetings out there to make some decisions. So we've probably got a bit of time left before any sort of work starts happening, but it's moving along. I wouldn't expect any, anything to go in the ground during the winter, to be honest.
Um, I was actually, I was curious about that, for the fact that the bond failed for the overpass/underpass. What, can you, is there, can you elaborate at all on that, Matthew? Like what? Oh, here's Melissa. Hold on. Is there a plan B?
Uh, not at this time, no. Basically, what it tells us is that the voters didn't want to spend the $20 million on a, on an overpass or an underpass. Beyond that, it doesn't tell us much. Without the funding, you know, it's not something the city can do. So I don't know. It'll be, probably continue to be discussed forever until something.
Well, maybe the Active Transportation Plan will have some recommendations for improving, you know, getting from the north to the south or whatever it may be.
I know in the draft that one of the highest priorities in the Trails and Active Transportation Plan is the Fifth Street crossing. And it won't, obviously, it won't address cars, cars over the crossing, but it'll address bike on that crossing, which, you know, if more people bike and walk, potentially mitigate some of the traffic over there. It's also, I think, going to discuss the school layout and how that's actually driving traffic over the Fifth Street crossing pretty substantially, which is something that's completely out of the city's control, but is, you know, exacerbating condition.
Yeah, I thought that was one of the most valid, well, I don't know, valid comments when I was on the bike tour, was rethinking, you know, how many drop-offs parents have to have, depending on how old their kids are.
It's certainly a unique setup.
It is. Hi, Melissa, you're catching us at the very tail end, or we've pretty much wrapped it up. Shannon didn't make it, so we, Matthew did his best for the Public Works update. He gave the planning update, and we are just about to move on to board comments. But since you're just joining us, do you have any questions about planning updates or public work updates?
No, it's so good to see all your faces, though. I'm sorry that I've missed. I've been having some night work meetings that I can't miss. But it's good to see you all without a four-hour meeting in front of us.
Yeah, we're on 30 minutes, 29.
We should get a gold star for that, Jesse.
Well, we're just not seeing you too, Melissa.
I know, yay. We almost went back in person for the longer than one meeting, but that's okay. Okay, let's do, wrap up board comments here. Does anybody have any board comments they want to make before we adjourn for the evening? And then everybody on Zoom. Okay, hearing.
I'll make, I'll make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know what's going to happen between now and when the weather's warm. None of us are going to know what's going to happen, but I'm hoping. What's going to happen, but I'm hoping that we can still do our get-together. Knowing that the board makeup is going to change probably, right? At some point between now and when we feel safe to be in person. Clearly, it'll have to change in January because you don't get two commissioners on a board. And so. Something's going to have to change, but I hope we can still figure out a way to do our. Post-growth policy in-person. Celebration. We don't forget.
That did remind me of one thing, and I don't know why it reminded me, but. The city manager did state yesterday at the city commission meeting that there is a. Commissioner training, but which will include all boards and commissions training that has been set up with Dan Clark of the Local Government Center at MSU. On January twelfth. And so I will keep you updated with that, but I would highly, highly encourage everyone to go to that. That should be really informative and it'll. Give you a good idea of what you all are supposed to be doing and what the role of boards and commissions are. So. Sort of unrelated, but for some reason that reminded me of that. So put that on your calendars.
Yeah, I've done like three or four trainings now with local government at MSU. For all different things related to commission and board work and it's so helpful, you all. I hope that you will. Go. It's really important for all the boards, but especially I would say planning.
And did you say that was going to be at MSU or they're coming here?
Here right now, and there may be, there was some discussion at the commission meeting about trying to do something via Zoom. Right now, it's in person, but I will. Keep you updated with everything that I know. Details are pretty sparse right now.
It's going to be in the evening. I really like to see it on Zoom just because I know we have so many. Working people on boards and also so many people with kids on boards that it's really a tough time of day. I think five to eight. For people who work nine to fives or have young kids.
And so if I'm hearing everybody correctly, the composition of this board. Will stay the same until. At least February, it sounds like, or something like that?
No, it will have to change in January. It will, we have to change it in January.
I think we could potentially leave two commissioners on. I think the state allows for that, but I think that's the decision. I think the commission will have to make that decision. I'd have to look at the state law again, but I'm pretty sure.
I defer. I would be surprised.
On that either. I don't have it up in front of me, so.
I'd be surprised, but I guess we'll see.
Yeah.
Just because we're losing. Losing, we're not losing. Two commissioners are being replaced and. They're on other boards that have commissioners. So I'd be surprised, I guess, if the commission lets some boards absent of commissioners and I don't know. We'll see what happens. So who knows? New commission. Too soon to tell.
And I guess I meant also that it's just that. Like, I think Matthew said earlier, the decision hasn't been made as to which kind, which direction for the planning board it was going to go. To, so in that context, it's going to stay the same until. Midwinter or something.
Yeah, it sounds like until the strategic planning process is done. And I did pull up the Montana code here. It does allow two official members who reside within the city limits to be appointed by the city council, in this case, commission. You may be. May in the discretion of city council be employed or hold public office in the city. So under state law, we could have two commissioners. Whether or not the city commission wants to do that is completely up to the city commission.
And whether the person wants to do it.
Isn't it Shannon's seat though? This.
That's also true because he is employed by the city.
Well, it's a thing. So thank you for finding.
You were probably correct because of Shannon. I was not thinking about that. I was just thinking about it. So yeah, one will have to go.
Done, done, done. One will have to go. Who is it going to be? You guys will have to figure it out, you bigwigs on the commission. You'll have to tell us what you want to do.
We'll find out.
Time will tell. Well, congrats Tori for getting on there. That's wonderful.
Thanks Jesse.
Okay, so I, Matt, Matthew, I was wondering, when you're talking with the MSU students for the downtown plan and you're talking about maybe doing it at a different. You know, time of the, in December. So you're also saying that it would be. Like during the day so that we'd be walking around? Is that what you're thinking kind of?
No, basically. I've seen their presentations digitally, but I would hope that they would make boards and we'd hold it inside in during the evening. But because it would be kind of beholden to MSU schedule and I think their semester ends before our scheduled meeting would happen. We might have to change the, the date. I would expect the time to still be in the evening. That would be my preference for a look meeting as always. So. Hopefully, we can do the same time just at a different date.
Okay, I would just suggest that because December gets to be incredibly, incredibly busy with all kinds of different things. That as soon as you can pin them down. That, and give us an option or, or something that we know for that because. There's only so many evenings.
Yeah, I will try on Friday to get a solid date in time for that setup.
Any other board comments? Okay. I don't, I guess our next meeting is to be determined. Maybe the, well, I don't know. Let's just leave it at that. TBD, TBD. Okay. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six eleven PM.
Second. See you all. Bye.
I, I.
I, I, I.
Okay, nice to see you buddy. Thank you so much. Short and sweet. I appreciate all your civic service.
Okay.